Call to order, the city council regular meeting of Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at six oh two P M. Uh, city clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Hasselbrink.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dobi.
Here.
Councilmember Hibbard.
Here.
Councilmember Lowe.
Here.
Councilmember Nofolda.
Here.
Um, and tonight, we do have new video equipment that's been installed. Tonight's meeting will be recorded in higher quality and streaming will be available after the meeting on the city's website and YouTube channel. Um, can you, uh, please join us and stand the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation by Mayor Pro Tem Dobi? Please join me as we honor our flag and our great country. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Lord, I ju- I just want to say thank you. I think oftentimes in these spaces, we come with our laundry list of things that we want to ask for, that we want to make sure that you heard the first, second, or third time. Um, but tonight, I just want to say thank you. I want to thank you for the safety that is offered to our residents. I thank you for our first responders, which include our dispatch operators, which we know work at such a high and spectacular level. Thank you for the police officers that have dedicated part of their life to serve this community. I thank you for our fire. I thank you for our military base and our military personnel. I thank you that our borders are safe. If any of us are watching the news, we can see that there have been various things that have happened even in our cities next to us, but it's not here. So I just want to say thank you for that. I want to pray over our businesses. I thank you that they would thrive and that they would flourish and that they would be blessed in spectacular and unexpected ways, because there is no limit to the benefit of being a business in Los Alamos. So I thank you that that would be a realized benefit to all of our businesses, no matter their size. And last, I thank you for the wisdom and discretion that you would give us on this dais, that we would remember what our responsibility is, that we would treat it with the honor that it deserves, that we would be mindful of the decisions that we make, but then we would also be open to when we don't quite get it right and open to the, the remedies for it, that we would be co-laborers with our residents and with our staff. And I just thank you in advance for all that will be accomplished in this meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
Perfect. We've got a few presentations tonight, but I'm going to take them a little bit out of order because our Public Works team here that does all the hard labor has been up since, here since five A M., five thirty? Okay, it's the same. It's just not awful. So if we can get the Public Works team and Development Services, Mr. Noda, come on up. Come on up. Don't be afraid. Don't be shy. Uh, National Public Works Week is this week, May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth. It is a celebration of the tens of thousands of men and women who provide and maintain the infrastructure and services collectively known as public works. This year marks the sixty-fifth annual National Public Works, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health and the well-being of people of Los Alamos. This week is in honor of the city's public works, whose dedication maintains our city's infrastructure. They do the beautiful medians. They just, they make us look pretty. So we, we really appreciate your work. You guys are the, the hard workers, um, behind the scenes and we just appreciate everything that you do. And I'll hand it over to Dr. Noda.
So like the mayor stated, they are responsible for basically three divisions. It's streets, it's parks, and it's facilities. And, you know, for instance, streets, it's, it's, we call it sidewalk to sidewalk. So it's sidewalk, curb, gutter, storm drains, uh, the streets, of course, the medians, and everything you see at the parks, the facilities, whether it's internal or external facilities we have out there. So again, um, just like in the invocation of our mayor Pro Tem, they also are a big part of our safety in the city as well. So again, thank you to the public works crew. So, um, I'm gonna read their name and, um, you know, we're gonna start off and the mayor's gonna hand. So we're starting off with our public work superintendent, Lori Hempi. Our public work supervisor, Renee Carmody. Our lead foreman, Louis Reyes. Senior maintenance, Miguel Delatorre. Our interim senior maintenance, Paul McKinnon. Maintenance Albert Diaz. Maintenance Brett Clark. Our maintenance, Jose Mendoza. Maintenance Katie Hall. Maintenance Jaime Gutierrez. And this is how we roll. This is literally his first day on the job and we're already giving him a certificate. Edgar Rodriguez. All right, okay. Again, thank you to the public works team. They work really, really hard. We offer public work services seven days a week in the city. So that's very unique for a city, offering public work services seven days a week. So again, congratulations. Thank you.
Go get some sleep. All right, our next presentation is from Working Wardrobes. If I could have you guys come up?
Good evening. I'm Richard Ward. I'm a volunteer and longtime supporter of, uh, the amazing community asset, uh, an organization called Working Wardrobes.
Thank you. My name is Johnny DeFrange and I serve as the social enterpriser director of Working Wardrobes.
But we wanted to tell you just a little bit about this amazing community organization over the next couple of hours. So this organization's, uh, mission is to help people overcome barriers to gainful employment. We all know how important that is. The slide, oh, there we go. So this, uh, organization was founded in nineteen ninety when a number of women got together for a very important event. An amazing leader by the name of Jerry Rosen, who unfortunately just passed last week, uh, was able to bring together women to, uh, to, uh, help overcome some of the challenges and barriers and problems that came with domestic violence. She organized an event that led to the creation of, uh, Working Wardrobes that was there to help women, uh, find gainful opportunities for employment primarily. That service expanded to men shortly thereafter, uh, to youth thereafter, uh, to, uh, those that are involved with the justice system, and finally to veterans. And so now it, uh, serves a broad number of those in the community. Uh, we all know how high the cost of living is in Orange County. We know the challenges. And so gainful employment is really a critical component of what we try to offer to overcome some of these challenges. Uh, the impact is quite amazing, amazing. Uh, this organization now in its thirty-fifth year has served some one hundred and thirty thousand people over that period of time uh, and serves about seven thousand, uh, a year, maybe a little bit more this year. This is done with a, uh, complete wraparound type of service where, uh, clients who come into Working Wardrobes are, uh, brought in, uh, they're, uh, do a little bit of an intake. They find out a little bit about what their goals and aspirations are. There's some career assessment that's provided, uh, some resume, uh, help, uh, job, uh, searches are, are provided, uh, resume writing, um, interview process so they can get skilled at being able to, uh, interview for that particular job. Finally, professional wardrobing, which of course is where the name comes from. They are given a complete set of new clothes presentable for their new business roles, so they feel the part as well. But there goes on to, uh, other training and, and professional development and, um, helping those folks get placed in the community and making sure that they are able to stay in those kind of jobs and roles over the long run. You know, we think this is, uh, such an important, um, aspect of what, what we do here at Working Wardrobes. We all know this, uh, expression that if you give a man a fish, you feed him for a day, but if you teach a man to fish, you feed him for a lifetime. And that is really what we try to do at Working Wardrobes. Give these folks the skills to be able to take care of themselves, be able to help themselves, get, uh, involved in the community, become a, an upstanding citizen, help their families and others that will also be affected by their career path and their ability to get back into the workforce in a meaningful way. We have a number of things that we need help with, but I'm gonna let Johnny talk about that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Before I get there, I want to share a little bit about my story and my why Working Wardrobes. Um, at the age of seven, I found myself homeless, living with two addicted parents, and I quickly found myself enrolled in the foster care system. Upon aging out, I was once again homeless despite having a full-time job in Orange County. Um, during that period, it took me about four years before I was able to elevate myself into a position where my paycheck can cover all my necessities and get me my, my own apartment in Orange County. And I like to think that had I known Working Wardrobes then, um, that would have shaved off about three years' time. That workload would have been reduced to just a single year. My life would have saved three years of work there. Um, I realized very quickly that there wasn't many people in my corner looking for my future. And at Working Wardrobes, our purpose is your future, and that's what brought me to work for this wonderful organization today. At our, some of the ways that you can help involve volunteering as the biggest. We have many opportunities and capacities that you can volunteer, such as providing trainings with your specific skillsets, becoming a personal stylist, which is extremely fun if you haven't tried that one before, coaching some of our clients, and helping at the donation center with me and my team as we sort and quality control items and then prepare them for distributing to our clients. With your community, you can also host a donation drive. You are more than welcome to also drop off any individual drives at our donation center anytime. And you can always ensure that you're inviting your neighborhood, your neighbors, associations, and even your councils in these donation drives. Additionally, you are welcome to volunteer as a group with a corporate social responsibility day, where you can volunteer for three hours in person at our donation center or other sites and help us with the large influx of clothing that you know will then dress a client for success. Additionally, we have many event sponsorships, and in these events, you can sponsor, attend, and volunteer at these events. On May twentieth, for example, we are helping over one hundred military and their spouses aboard Camp Pendleton. This Power Up For Success event is an impactful day of working directly with the clients in a conference-style setting. In addition, our thirty-fifth anniversary gala this year is another opportunity to underwrite, attend, and sponsor, and that will be Saturday, September twentieth in Newport Beach. Hopefully, you can see me there and see the razzle-dazzle of my new suit. I'm really looking forward to it. We also encourage matching gifts with employees and organizations and competitions or creating those matching opportunities within your own communications. In fact, former Costa Mesa Councilman Don Harper has actually issued a challenge to share with all of you. He will match all donations you individually, you individually or collectively make to Working Wardrobes up to ten thousand dollars. We're excited and thankful for his opportunity in matching that donation and his challenge to all to continue to do so. We also offer career exploration for many of our clients, and this is a big part in what is the cherry of Working Wardrobes. Have you ever had a professional who shaped your life, who helped you find what your purpose was, who gave you the hard love at times of what you needed to fix on your resume? And hey, you didn't notice that misspelling, but that's why no one's calling you back? Well, that's exactly what I needed when I was living in my two thousand and one Toyota Corolla, and I had to go to Starbucks every day and offer to buy people coffee for them to look at my resume. But with Working Wardrobes, you don't need to do that. You have a team ready and willing to look at you and your future, and it's their purpose in making sure that you are successful in such future. Council, I want to thank you for the, giving us the opportunity. And for everyone attending, thank you so much for listening to us. Appreciate it.
You know, this is such a great organization. It's, it's the thing you don't think about when, uh, people get jobs and they've got all the qualifications and they don't have the clothes. Um, so thank you for, um, uh, addressing the, the details. Um, I know I've donated many a clothes that the, uh, dry cleaners have shrunk, so, um, yeah, mhm, uh, that's my story. Um, exactly. So, um, I want to congratulate you on your thirty-fifth anniversary of Working Wardrobes, and, uh, we all here support your mission and we hope that it thrives and grows and, um, people like you come back and, you know, spread the mission. So thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
There you go. Give it to you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, come on over here. Perfect. Thank you so much. Next up, I'm gonna invite two of my buddies up, um, Amy and Sean Payne. Come on up. So the Business Lights Spotlight Program is a free business recognition program designed to create awareness about the variety of local businesses located in Los Alamos. This Business Spotlight Program is a great way for the city to say thank you, showcase great businesses in Los Al, and also provide another tool to help our businesses grow. This month's recognized business is Summer Harvest. What a wonderful organization. Summer Harvest is a local nonprofit that steps in to make sure families with children on free or reduced lunch still have access to healthy, nutritious food during summer and winter breaks. They focus on providing fresh produce, groceries, and simple family-friendly recipes to help ease the extra strain many families feel during those times. Their mission is about more than just food, is about making sure every child is fueled in mind, body, and soul, and no one is left behind. Today's Summer Harvest serves multiple school districts and in our region and continues to grow driven by the belief that no child should go hungry. Um, just a couple of personal words. I mean, I remember when Amy started this and, um, instead of complaining about a problem, she saw the problem and came up with a solution and then presented it. Um, I'm not sure if you're aware, but I think I have my stats right, that, um, Los Alamos School District, sixteen percent of our students qualify for re- free and reduced, um, lunches. Um, we don't get any funding from the state because that number's too low, but in Los Al, that number's sixteen to seventeen percent too high. Um, so Amy thought of Summer Harvest to fill in that gap. Um, so it's great. She's expanded to other school districts. Um, and it's just, like I say, during the summer and during the breaks, uh, these families have healthy meals, um, not goldfish and Captain Crunch, um, and healthy meals. And it's just, it's just a great organization for, once again, just one of the little details that people don't think about. So I want to thank you, and if you'd like to say a few words, come on up. You're not shy.
I am actually, though. Um, thank you so much. This was, um, a huge honor. I, I had no idea. Um, but, um, your guys' support as the city as a whole and the community has meant a lot to organ- our organization. Um, we started ten years ago at one school, and we've now grown to four different school districts and various schools on top of that. So we couldn't have done it without the support from you specifically, because I know you're a big cheerleader for us, but then the community, the council, the businesses locally, um, it's really meant a lot.
Do you want to say anything? You're just the eye cand- you're the eye candy tonight? All right, all right. Um, and so I would like to present you with the certificate for, uh, Summer Harvest for the mayor's Business Spotlight. And, uh, there will be a video tonight. We're gonna do a little sneak peek, but there will be a video that we'll also share with you, so you can share on all your social media as well.
My name is Amy Payne, and I am founder and executive director of Summer Harvest Food for Kids. Summer Harvest began about ten years ago when I was talking to my sister, who's a teacher over at King Elementary, and we were having a conversation about what to add into baskets for winter break. And some of these families were asking for items like bread and mayonnaise. It really got me to think if those are the expensive items that they're asking for for the two weeks of winter break, what happens during the ten weeks of summer? And so I took it upon myself to do a little research, uh, and to figure out, you know, what kind of programs are in place for children that are qualified for free lunch during the school year that don't have access during the summer to the federal food program.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for feeding our youngsters. We appreciate it. All right, so this is the fun part. Um, I'd like to bring up, well, first of all, with, uh, great pride, we announce Jason Bruton, Recreation Manager, as our Employee of the Quarter. So come on up. Emlyn, you need to come up, too.
Did he not know?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. That's fine. Yes, please.
So I have formal things to say about you and then non-formal. Jason Bruton is a Recreation Manager in the Recreation and Community Services Department. He started with the city of Los Alamos in two thousand and twenty-one. Jason brings to the team an elevated level of professionalism in customer service, branding, quality of programs and events. He is from this community with three kids in the local schools. He is invested in making this community the absolute best it can be and carries through with his commitment to raising the bar every year with what we produce as a city team. He has a team mentality and takes staff under his wing and trains them, equips and mentors them, and helps them to view things from a larger perspective, to understand the bigger picture. He encourages and empowers them to grow, be creative, and dream big. Jason is a major source of vision and takes great pride in the work that we do to serve our residents, expertly executing city events and top-notch programs and services for our Los Alamos community, which is absolutely true. But the truth is, the events that we put on, I know many of you attend and we are so thankful. What you don't see behind the scenes is Jason up at three in the morning, five in the morning, six in the morning with the crew until the very end at one A M. And he is the security blanket for our department in terms of executing these amazing events for thousands of people that come to visit Los Alamos and our, for our residents, most importantly. So thank you.
Okay, um, oral communications. This is the appropriate time to come forward to speak on any agenda item. These are, there are two public hearings on tonight's agenda. Comments will be called for the public hearings at the appropriate time. Comments will not be called individually for items not listed as public hearings. Um, if you would like to speak, please fill out a speaking, speaker card or sign in the sign-in sheet at the podium sheet. This allows staff to contact you for follow-up if needed. Do I have any public comments? Really shy people out there. Wow, all right, that's it for public comments. Um, let's see, a couple of things, uh, comments from the mayor, just some activities I did. Um, I attended the SCAG Conference in Palm Desert as the voting delegate. Uh, were able to connect with, uh, quite a few electives, um, in Orange County, L.A. County, San Bernardino. Um, it was, it was quite the conference, learned a lot. Then I attended the senior prom. Man, those ladies can party. Um, I was blessed to be able to serve them dinner and watch them enjoy themselves like they were in high school all over again. The King Salmon Band was a hit and the dance floor was full as well as the casino tables. Uh, I attended the Budget Standing Committee, made final tweaks on the budget that we're discussing tonight. I attended the City Selection Committee with the Orange County Mayors. Um, I was re-elected to ALEC for a four-year term. Uh, Sunburst Youth Academy Outdoor Learning Center dedication. Uh, this is, this was just a phenomenal event. Um, it was named after retired Congresswoman Grace Napolitano, who's been a huge advocate for sunburst since inception. Uh, she was there along with, um, just a ton of military, and she's just wanting to make sure that her vision moves forward. Um, I was able to catch up with, uh, General Beavers, um, who's our adjunct general in charge of the California National Guard, Congressman Derek Tran, and then also our base commander. Uh, they were all very excited about the expanding partnership opportunities that they see that the city has with the base. I attended the Casa Youth Shelter Gala. Uh, they're getting ready to break down on their expansion, so, which is exciting. It'll allow them to help, uh, more of our youth in crisis. Um, we had the Los Al Foundation Meeting. Uh, we voted to give, um, an additional ten thousand to Parks and Recs for ongoing and expanding adaptive recreation programs. That makes it thirty thousand dollars now, I believe, that we've been able to provide seed money for that. Uh, we were able to give another twenty thousand dollars to Public Works to purchase and plant additional trees throughout the city. There'll be more later on that tonight. And then we were able to purchase a larger ballistics vest for our growing boy Elvis. Um, so those were our three original initiatives. We've hit all three, and now we've added the senior, uh, programs in with that. Attended the school board meeting. I was honored to lead the pledge of allegiance, but more importantly, uh, recognized Emlyn Noda for her partnership and worked with the school district for a comprehensive district-city adaptive recreation program. Um, and we had the best cheering section, kind of put the student cheering section to shame. Uh, let's see, uh, I attended the OCFA Budget Committee. We approved the general fund budget of five hundred and ninety-five million dollars. Full board will discuss the budget and hopefully approve it this coming Thursday. Uh, ninety percent of the expenditures are for personnel. Uh, we have a CIP budget for forty-three point nine million dollars. Uh, the problem that we're having is, um, getting engines and trucks. Engines, uh, their price increased from eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-three to one point four million dollars now with a two-to-three-year lead time. Trucks increased from $1.8 million in 2023 to $3 million now, with a three-to-four-year lead time. But we are excited, pension liability will be paid off next year early and it's saving $94.8 million of interest to the taxpayers, which is absolutely awesome. We also, we'd like to congratulate the high school seniors on their graduation and those being promoted at the middle school and elementary school banners have been hung on Los Alamitos Boulevard. Small businesses are the core of what makes Los Alamitos feel like home. Although the official week took place between May 4th and 10th, we encourage all residents to shop and support their local businesses in the upcoming summer months. We love our small businesses, they just add the character to our city. And, let's see, so where am I? The American Legion, just across the street over here. The American Legion will be unveiling the incredible mural on Memorial Day, utilizing funds from our Revive Program. Post-716 commissioned an artist who has created a mural honoring all branches of the military. Please visit the Legion's website at losalamitospost716.org for more information. If you drive down the side of the Legion, you can see it in progress now and it is absolutely spectacular. Summer Concert Series, it's that time again. The Los Alamitos Recreation and Community Services Department is holding its annual Summer Concert Series on Thursday nights beginning June 12th, 2025. The Summer Concert Series presented by the Parks, Rec and Cultural Arts Commission is a series of free outdoor events that provide opportunities for families to come together and enjoy live music and food, made possible with the help of community sponsors, Randy Hill and Hirsch and Associates. All the concerts will take place from 6:30 to 8:00 with free summer giveaway items offered at the Los Alamitos Recreation and Community Services Info Booth and family fun activities provided by Los Alamitos Rec on the Go. The first set of our four concerts will take place on Pine Street and are called Concerts on Pine Street. These four concerts will be Thursdays, June 12th, June 19th, June 26th and July 10th, with June 12th and July 10th as a special feature of Nights on Pine in collaboration with the Development Services Department. The Concerts on Pine Street will have vendor booths, moon bounces, lawn games and food booths. The second set of four concerts called Concerts in the Park will alternate between Little Cottonwood Park and Oroville Lewis Park. These concerts will be Thursdays, July 17th, July 24th, July 31st and August 7th. The Concerts in the Park will also have vendor booths and food booths. Visit the city website for band information. These are just a great time, bring your chair, bring some snacks and just hang out with your neighbors and listen to some good music. And event near and dear to my heart, Paws in the Park. Join us for a fun-filled day with our furry friends at Paws in the Park on Saturday, June 28th, from 12:00 to 3:00 at Little Cottonwood Park. Thank you to our sponsor, Forever Wild Animal Sanctuary for their generous donation. From the doggy costume contest and getting treats and toys from our vendors to agility courses, from discounted vaccines to microchipping, I hear the veterinarian's amazing. There's something for every pet lover. To participate in the dog costume contest, bring your best dressed pup to the stage located in the back of the park at 1:30 p.m. The top three dogs will receive an award. Also, don't miss the opportunity to adopt your next pet. So at the end of the day, full of wagging tails and wet noses, you could go home as a dog mom or a cat daddy. And updates from the staff? I'm sorry, was it something funny I said?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, we can all be cat daddies.
I'd like to turn it over to Irving Montenegro to discuss an important milestone that we just reached.
All right, thank you, Chet. Good evening, Mayor, members of our City Council. I just wanted to say that I'm happy to be here tonight. My name is Irving Montenegro Jr., Development Services Manager with the City of Los Alamitos. And I'm here to please provide a brief presentation on the city's reception as Tree City USA. One of these will work. Maybe not. Yeah, next. Oh. Oops. Back, one more. All right, so the objective, so the objective of the Tree City USA honor is really to get the national brand and recognition as presented by Arbor Day Foundation. And pleased again to present that this year we received that official recognition and it was a true partnership and collaborative effort with a lot of members, particularly generous contributions by the Los Alamitos Community Foundation, who as the mayor presented earlier, contributed to about $20,000 towards the expansion of more trees this year, but even in past years with the expansion of our urban forest in the city. In addition to that, we also have the support of our local West Coast Arborists, our contracted arborists in the city, along with the Public Works Division, who's the one that ultimately puts the trees or plants the trees throughout the parks and Parkway medians and throughout the city. And also want to give a special shout out to Taylor Poole, she's our Economic Development Assistant, who submitted the application, worked hard on the process to get that official recognition in the books. But ultimately through the support of City Council, we're here now and we're going to celebrate the heck out of this because it's a really big honor to be able to wear that crown as Tree City USA. So, next slide, please. What is Tree City USA? As I mentioned, it's a national recognition, it's presented by the Arbor Day Foundation, and it recognizes cities that are committed to urban forestry. I'm sure that you've traveled through different cities and you see this flag and this placard that will soon be throughout the city as well, that has a Tree City USA moniker on it. And it's, it's pretty exciting because it ultimately demonstrates the commitment that we have in the city and I think a lot of folks, residents, businesses enjoy the trees throughout the city. But we can actually now, beyond that, plant more and really commit to the aspiration of becoming more driven through trees, health and sustainability, and then really commit to the future planning and implementation of that. So over 3,600 communities participate throughout the U.S. And so it just really encourages and solidifies our commitment to that. So, next slide, please. Just point at the screen. So criteria markers, there's four standards that we really need to meet annually in order to be able to have that recognition. And luckily through the course of the last year and a half, we were able to meet all standards. And really the first one is having a tree board, which is our Los Alamitos Community Foundation, that serves as that body that oversees, maintains and ensures that we're meeting all of the obligations in the city to make sure that we have that. We establish and passed adopted a tree ordinance through the support of our City Council. We were able to make sure that we have a plan in place and a policy in place to maintain, manage the wellness of our trees throughout the city. And that again is on our public parks, our medians, our parkways. Standard number three is a set, is a set budget of $2 per capita for the tree care and expansion. And within our budget, we are able to accomplish that. That does not include the generous contributions of local partners and our support of our organizations in the city that have contributed. As I mentioned, with the Community Foundation being one of our champions in the community. And then lastly, making sure that we, again, celebrate Arbor Day in a right way. And if you're familiar with the event, either from this year or last year, we've expanded the way that we celebrate that and we're constantly looking at ways that we can help improve and make sure that the community understands the importance of Arbor Day. For those that may not know, it's not just about wearing the Tree City USA, it's also about celebration of the benefits that it provides. And so there's a number of benefits, as you can see, it really increases or enhances our green public spaces. It provides cooler temperatures in a natural way, rather than having concrete all over the place and the roadways and streets. You now have a higher presence of trees that will provide that cooler temperature, adding property value to our residents and even our businesses. Presence of trees is not just a feel-good feeling, but it's also something that really helps increase our property values throughout the city. And then really just establishes a stronger community feel towards, towards that, so. So what's next? We're going to continue celebrating Arbor Day in a, it went to, it went back, sorry. We'll continue celebrating Arbor Day annually, as we have just in the last few years. We've added a new element with the mulch and compost with the support of our trash hauler in the city, UWS. And as you can see in the pictures, in spite of the rain that we had this year, we still got a pretty good response and also commitment of some of the community members that came out. And so we'll continue to offer that event, just not, not just as a celebration, but also as an educational piece of what Arbor Day does in the city. We'll continue the expansion of our urban forests, as I mentioned before. We have the support of our Los Alamitos Community Foundation, we have the support of our community and so we're going to continue to tactfully display more trees and plant more trees throughout. And then we're going to foster the partnerships that we have with our residents and local organizations, none of which this would be possible. As I mentioned, West Coast Arborists being one of them, Epsom in the last two years being a very big pioneer in making sure that we have this title. And then for renewed focus on energy sustainability through partnerships with SCE and Epsom. So with that, I wrap up the presentation and I thank you for the time this evening.
Mayor, may I add, even though Manager Irving Montenegro stated, I just want to emphasize that we could not attain Tree City USA without the assistance of our partners in the city. Epsom has purchased trees that we plant at various parks and of course our Los Alamitos Community Foundation. Over the past couple of years, they have injected a little bit over $50,000 into the community worth of trees. So again, we could not do it with our partners and like, like Manager Montenegro said, we do have some plans and some programs coming up for the future.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
On to warrants for the council's accelerated warrant policy. Questions will be noted by staff and followed up after the meeting. Questions regarding tonight's warrants that were received by the deadline were sent out to the council today before the meeting and made available on the website. Are there any new questions to follow up before the next council meeting? All right, can I get a motion in a second?
Move it.
Full call, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dobie?
Aye.
Councilmember Hibbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Lowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Aye.
Okay, on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Would any of my colleagues like to pull an item?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Maybe E, just E real quick.
Okay, no problem.
Sorry.
All right. Item E.
So can we move the balance minus E then, since we have a first and a second?
Sorry, no, I was just. I'll slow down here, but I'll, okay.
And Madam Mayor, since we have a first and a second to move the balance excluding E, can we get an all in favor?
Okay. Aye. Can I say all in favor? Good lord almighty.
Forgive me, Madam Mayor.
Cat daddy really took over the meeting, didn't they? All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
No. Item E.
I was just curious on item E, regarding the traffic signal. If the, if Cypress is kind of driving this traffic signal and so forth and are, are their applicant, then on the maintenance side, why would we want to share 50/50 on the maintenance? Shouldn't it just, isn't it easier just for one city just to do it all versus share? Or, I was just curious as to why that is, or if there's a background on that.
And I'll ask Mr. Noda to follow in and fill in any gaps that I missed. But the city has a number of cooperative agreements, both with Seal Beach and Cypress. Anytime where our properties abud, we typically take the approach of 50/50 for ongoing maintenance, where the responsible entity will take the lead on the construction of the facility and then on an ongoing basis, we would split that cost 50/50. The nice thing about that is that both cities get their interests represented in terms of the programming of those signals going forward. Whereas if one entity had full control over that, there might be some issues that run in, that you can run into with trying to program your other signals. So it almost incentivizes everyone to work together. And as I stated, this will be one of many that we have with our neighboring jurisdictions.
We have a lot of these.
Exactly, and this typically is a standard operating practice for most Orange County cities.
Cool, thanks.
You good?
I'm good now.
All right, can I get a motion for item E?
I'll make the motion.
One second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. On to discussion item A, online parking permit system. Can we get a staff report, please?
Of course, I'll turn this over to Dr. Noda to go through. But I did want to say before we start that this is yet another example of us trying to modernize the way that we go about providing services to our residents. And by building a system like this and putting it online, hopefully we also negate the residents' needs to actually come into City Hall and they can handle all of this from the comfort of their couch. But with that, I'll turn it over.
All right, thank you, City Manager Simmons. Yes, like he stated, the city in general has undergone several technology upgrades in several areas, as the council is aware. Some of the different departments that have gone, done some tech upgrades includes the City Clerk's Office, the Finance Department, Police Department and of course us here in Development Services. The addition of the online permit parking program is just another way to make a user-friendly online platform that can service our residents in a much more efficient and basically resident-friendly atmosphere. We're going to talk about that a little bit more in depth. I'm going to introduce our management analyst, Stephanie Reese. She was the lead on this online permitting software contract from beginning to end, from, you know, contract agreements, doing the demo with the different platforms to implementation. And as we go about it further, it's, we're right now in the midst of outreach and to educate people. And then of course, you know, going down there and working with the Police Department, specifically the Parking Control Division, as we have a date that she'll detail in this presentation that she has. So again, this is our management analyst, Stephanie, and she'll take us through the PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening, Council, and thank you for your time. So starting June 1st, the city is moving to the online permitting system to streamline processes, improve access and cut down paper use and to deliver better customer service. Parking permits are currently issued in person in our Los Alamitos Police Department. Residents must submit an application with a valid vehicle registration and driver's license that match their address. There is no charge for permits, no household cap, and they do not expire. The new process, the new online system brings several improvements. Residential parking permits will be limited to three per address, valid for one year, July through June, and require annual renewal. Applications can be submitted on the Los Alamitos Get a Permit webpage. Where residents can upload proof of residency and vehicle registration. Residential and annual visitor permits will be mailed as hang tags, while daily visitor event and oversized vehicle permits will be available as digital PDFs. Additionally, a new $10 fee for temporary solid waste bin permits will help cover administrative costs and improve enforcement.
Hold on, Stephanie, I want to make a point there that she claimed, stated here that currently you can come in person to the Police Department to obtain a permit. Going forward, the residents will have an option to do it online, but we will be keeping the in-person option as well. Instead of going to PD, now you could come into City Hall during working hours. So again, we are offering the online, but if you don't want the online version, you can come into City Hall and obtain that as well.
Yes, we will have an iPad in the front to help residents walk through the process and create their online account. So it will no longer be the paper process, but if I need to help them scan their documents, get them started, just to, to help them, but even necessarily the next year, I'm happy to help, I can schedule time or. We're actually going to train our front clerical staff to be able to assist residents if they need the in-person interaction. We now offer two new permits. The oversized vehicle permit costs $10 for each three-day period with a maximum of nine consecutive days and a seven-day waiting period before reapplying. It's available as a printable PDF for the vehicle dashboard. The temporary solid waste bin permit applies to residents and businesses needing a 2-40 yard dumpster for the duration of the project. It costs $10 and doesn't require printout. Thank you. So starting June 1st, residents in permit zones must apply for permits through the new online system. All previous permits are invalid and annual renewal is required. And applications are due by September 1st, 2025, after which parking regulations will be enforced. The current parking permitted zones are in the neighborhoods of Old Town West, Old Town East and Greenbrook. Here's a first look at our Los Alamitos Get a Permit. Um, here's a first look at our Los Alamos Get a Permit webpage. Um, it's designed to streamline the permit applications for residents and businesses. So they'll be able to go ahead and register for a new account. They'll upload their um, proof of residency to be able to create an account. Um, once the account is created, Wendy, can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. Um, they'll be able to order their permits. So it will only allow residents who are in the permitted areas to be able to order residential and visitor permit parking. Um, and all other residents will be able to order, um, the oversized vehicle or the trash container permits, and businesses will also be allowed to do that as well. So, in future years, permit renewal will be from May first to June thirtieth, uh, with enforcement starting July first, and registered residents will be notified via bulk mail email through the online system. Um, our plan for public outreach, it's already started. We've done a door hanger with just minimal information, um, just to get people to go to our city webpage that has um, fact, fact, uh, fact sheet with all the information for frequently asked questions. Um, we're going to be reaching out to the community through various channels, our, um, the Los Alu, the Los Alamos Weekly Newsletter, um, our city website, social media, and mailers to be sent to residents and all business owners. Um, so currently on our webpage at cityoflosalamitos.org/getapermit, you can also scan the QR code. Um, and that has our, um, seven pages of information, uh, frequently asked questions that residents may have. Um, and thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
I've got a few.
No problem.
Alright. Thank you for the lovely presentation. Uh, I just have a few questions and it's across a few pages, so uh, it's not, it's not a ton though. So my first question is, the limit to three per address. Is that a hard and fast? What if you need more?
So that's just standard, what we've seen through other cities. This is a discussion item, so if you decide that you'd like us to look into further additional permits, but they do get two free visitor permits. Um, so if they do have additional household, uh, members that may be living there temporarily, they can use a visitor permit throughout, throughout the year, so technically they'll have five.
I'm thinking more of those that have driving young people, so I would like to have some consideration. Maybe you get up to three, no charge, but then there is an additional cost if you require more than the three, because I believe transportation is a luxury. But I also wouldn't want to be the parent that, uh, needs the teenage driver, but can't have one because they can't park their car anywhere. So, uh, that under advisement. And then, um, that question goes to another page. So then the oversized vehicle permits, are they being, because it's three days, nine consecutive, are they being incentivized to park somewhere else? I, I don't have an oversized vehicle, but I imagine if I did, I would want to have it somewhere near me. Is there like a suggestion for somewhere else to park? Is it to try to get them to move into? I'm sorry, I'm hearing someone else speaking while I'm speaking, and it's really distracting. So if we could, if we could, okay, praise God. Um, but uh, back to this. Is there like a suggestion for where they can take their oversized vehicles? Is that a, a main issue that we have?
It's not, it's not currently, um,
So I'm, I'm going to answer that if you may, Stephanie, Mayor Protem. That's a great question. Um, so we do have several residents in the city that complain about oversized, um, vehicles. And so, um, you know, it is an issue. It's not the, you know, a great issue. But this is something here that, um, we're taking a look in our municipal code to make sure that, uh, you know, because our municipal code is kind of gray in terms of, the only thing it says is commercial vehicles, two things, it's either eight feet wide, doesn't state anything about a length, or, and that it has, uh, writing on the vehicle that displays a business. So you could drive a small vehicle like a Toyota Corolla and put down on your windshield, your business, and that's technically considered a, possibly a commercial vehicle. And so to answer your question, we're looking at large commercial vehicles. Um, and yes, you know, um, we are allowing you to park in here three days. And after your three days, you have to park it elsewhere, and most people will pay for a storage facility to park it elsewhere, or, or talk to their employer to see if they could park that vehicle at the place of employment.
Okay, but we wouldn't be making any recommendations for where, because I'm thinking more like a boat or a trailer that, uh, because I don't think all of the places where the permitted parking is are, um, they're not multifamily homes. Some of them are standalone.
Correct. So with regards to RV or a boat, uh, it is not allowed to park on the street at all currently. So we're actually allowing you three days to park on there. So if you come in and you're going to get ready, like perfect example, tomorrow's day weekend coming up, right? You plan on leaving on a Saturday, you can get your trailer, your boat coming in on a Thursday or Friday to prepare for your leave, then you can go. Currently, right now, I don't believe it's, it's allowed to do that at all. So besides that, yeah, when it's time for storage, you'd have to find somewhere else to store your boat or your RV.
Okay. Alright, my next question is, I'm looking at the parking permit zones. How were those neighborhoods selected? Because I, I noticed there is nothing mentioned for, uh, midtown, and I'm, I'm kind of wondering, how did they win the lottery on these parking permitted neighborhoods?
So, we do a survey, and we just completed one about a year ago, and I believe my memory serves me correct. It's either, I believe it's every three years we do a survey of the city to state that if one, you're happy with the current permit parking program, uh, in your neighborhood, or two, you would request a permit parking program in your neighborhood. And again, it doesn't have to be the entire neighborhood. It could be a street, or two streets, or whatever, but, um, it's through that survey done. Again, I believe it's every three years that the resident through that survey can request. So if my memory serves me right, this past, like I said, we did it about a year ago, or a year and a half ago, uh, not, the, the, the neighborhoods with the current permit parking program are happy with what they have, and we didn't have anything, um, out there with a, you know, high majority, at nothing above fifteen, twenty percent stating that they want a permit parking program in their neighborhood.
We'll stick a pin in that. Okay, um, just because I would think that neighborhoods that are most adjacent to where businesses are would be very much interested in permit parkings, because I know where I live specifically, I get a lot of the neighborhood orthodontists, um, folks, and then a lot of the restaurant there that will come and park in the neighborhood. And my street specifically, the little sliver that we have is grossly impacted because I also have a most fabulous fire station. So a lot of my stuff is reded out. So I'm just, uh, just something to, to ponder. I'm not pushing either way, just a thought, right?
Yeah, you know, we have a traffic commission, as you're aware, Mayor Protem, and a resident or number of residents can come, and we can go out there and do a survey. We're not, uh, how do you call, you know, locked in on that. We have to do it every three years, right? And so we can do a survey of a specific area. We have that capability.
Y'all can do anything, I love it.
Um, and just to add on the frequently asked questions, on the very last page, I did include information if a resident were to want to petition um, for their neighborhood to have the permit parking. So, um, it does have links to it and then more information, so if they're interested. Um, it will be, it's available on the webpage as well.
Perfect. That, that writing was really tiny, so I'm not even going, I ain't going to lie, I didn't read all that, it was super tiny. Okay, so then my next, my last question is, will there be any mailers in regards to the renewals? Because, um, I don't know about y'all, but I know folk that change their email addresses rather frequently. So, I, I would hate for people to come in and raise a fuss because they didn't renew, because they didn't get the email, because Yahoo locked them out. So is that under a consideration at all, or is it just?
No, we plan to do the exact same public outreach for next year. Um, especially this year, we're going to try and, um, do it as often as we possibly can, just to, um, really get to educate the residents. Um, but we'll continue to use the same channels for the ongoing years as well. So we'll have the door hanger, the, the, the mailer, we'll have, um, the Lo, the Los Alu, our E newsletter, so we'll have all the, um, the same format we will for next year.
And the app too. There'll be like a toggle on our app so that, um, I'm a huge fan of like rotating banners that say whatever is the newest and freshest information that someone should draw their eye to. So is that?
Yes.
We're actually in the throes of talking about a website redesign, and then also that travels down to the app redesign, so, so yes.
It is, uh, like actually a very great suggestion that, um, we can add it to our, um, like our, our app that we report our items to for GoGov. Um, we can add it as an additional link for them to go directly to the permit site.
Perfect. Thank you.
Go for it.
For the daily visitor event guest permits, I'm assuming you don't have to be a resident to purchase one of those. For example, like if I'm going to my kid's open house at Oak, buy the permit for that?
Um, it is only for the permitted areas, um, that are, for those neighborhoods that are impacted. Um, they'll be able to purchase the, the, the one-dollar daily visitor, um, guest permits. It's for areas that are not, um, requiring permits, um, it would just be parking as usual.
No, but I mean, like, say there's an event at Oak, you know, you can't park at Oak, I mean, genetically. Do we have to have a permit to, to?
So.
But we don't have the ability to buy it?
So, each permit, whether it's a permanent or a guest permit, it's tied to a house. So if you don't live on Oak Street, you cannot get a permit there. Does that make sense?
It, well.
Yeah, okay, now.
I understand, but it doesn't necessarily make sense. Well, for, if it's an event pass or a guest permit, I'm assuming you're going to enforce it.
Correct.
Like I said, if, if anybody's ever gone to an event at Oak, and I'm using that specifically, because that whole neighborhood is permitted, it seems.
Mm-hmm. So, if that, yeah, so if, again, I'm going to use you, I'm going to use, I'm going to use myself as an example.
Well, there's never any room.
Currently, right now, if I live on Oak Street and there's an open house, and I wanted to get guest pass, then yes, I technically can.
That I understand.
Yes.
We all don't live in that neighborhood.
Yeah, and if you don't live there, then the answer is no, you can't, because it's tied to a house. It's to an address.
Well, shouldn't there be a way to park where there's an event that you want to go to? Legally, I guess.
Is, is there any way that during special events like open house, back to school night, we can, um, do away with the permit for that specific time, because it's usually in the evening from six to eight o'clock?
Yeah. Um, like I said, that's a great question. I would like to bring it back to the team here and sit down with our police to kind of gauge that thought and see if we could come up with something. Okay?
Any other questions?
I have a just quick, simple one. How many permits are issued currently?
Um, at this time, we haven't had, um, you know, a system to kind of keep everything on track, so we only have an estimation. Um, by going through the online permitting system, this way it's going to alleviate, um, a lot of those questions, so we can actually bring like reports back next year on how many were issued. Um, because as of right now, it's, it's unclear.
So I'm looking at these times. So you have to have a perm, a permit to park from eight AM to eight PM?
No, I believe.
To have a permit to park between eight AM and eight PM? I'm a little confused on that, because if I don't have to have a permit, then Jordan's issue gets addressed.
Yeah.
Because you don't need a permit until eight PM. Typically, when you need permits, it's for later in the evening, because that's when folk are coming home from work and they would like to park at their own house. But the way this looks to me is, you need a permit between eight AM and eight PM.
I believe every neighborhood that has a permit parking system has a different day and time.
I'm looking specifically at the slide, and it's, uh, for Old Town West, which is butts Oak, it's daily from eight AM to eight PM. So do I need the permit from eight AM to eight PM, or I don't need the permit from eight AM to eight PM?
Um, to, I can clarify on the map, so that it's more clear for residents. It's, there is no parking during those hours. You have, you must have a permit during those hours, uh, that's stated. So daily from eight AM to eight PM, you must have a permit in order to park in that area.
So can we change that? Because that seems a little backwards. Typically, when there's parking permits that are issued, I used to live in Cerritos for like five minutes, and you had to have a permit overnight, and it started at, I don't know. And I don't remember because it was a long time ago, but it was like, we'll say six or seven. And then you needed it until like five or six the next morning. That makes more sense to my mind than a block of time people can't park in a neighborhood when most folks should be at work anyway, especially Monday through some, like a daily thing. I don't.
Well, I, I think I can take this one, Mayor Protem. Given the fact that we have so few of these parking districts, it might make sense for us to go back and just take a quick look at all of them, and really kind of just do a, okay, I'm sure this made sense when we put it in, but have things changed to this point where we might need to make adjustments, and maybe we can figure out where exactly the happy medium is between making sure that the residents have a place to park, but also trying to take into account what exactly enforcement looks like on days when we have events at school such. Or other things going on in the neighborhood. There's probably some easy language that we can add in order to make that more palatable for everybody.
And we, wouldn't we want to make it citywide? I don't understand why there would be the discrepancy between neighborhoods when most of these, I think, are. Now, if you were to go further into midtown, then I understand, because it's all multifamily, but these permits look like they're for mostly standalone units. So I would figure that, it, just to alleviate the issues with any enforcement, that we'd want to have it be continuous across the, the whole one point a square mile.
As you and I sit here, I agree with what you, with everything you just said, the, I, I would just like to check and see if we have any historical data about why something happened in one neighborhood versus another, and maybe there was a different issue they were trying to address. I'd just like to give staff a time to take a look at it first. That's all.
Um, the local story here, we'll give you some history on it. So in Carrier Row, um, we went out to a survey, this was years ago, and they did not want it. Um, and it was mainly, especially over where I live, right by the base on drill weekends, it was crazy. Um, we went and talked to the base and said, hey, can you really encourage your soldiers to park on the base? There's plenty of parking there, and it doesn't seem to be an issue. I mean, we have two days out of the year where parking gets a little crazy. Um, now it's not even an issue. Fourth of July used to be crazy, but now they don't allow walk-on traffic, so our streets are empty. Um, but it was one of those things where they really didn't want it. We really don't have a, a parking issue. Right, and so that's when they, they broke it up into the different areas.
I remember, and this is before I arrived here, but I remember watching some of the council meetings back in two thousand twenty, two thousand nineteen, and there was a couple of parking districts that residents came in and asked to rescind the parking district at the end of the day.
Which was ours?
So it, it's one of those things that, it's worth bearing out in terms of, are these ones still needed where they are, and is there something we can do to change in order to accommodate some of the needs that we see popping up today? And again, I, I'll stress this to the, to the entire city council. We're trying a lot of different things when it comes to road stripings, parking, trying different ways to create more parking for the residents, and so uh, it's about time to take a look at the permitting system. The nice thing about this item in particular was a, hey, we can provide an easier way for residents to access it without coming into city hall. Now the question is, do these residents even really need it at the end of the day? And I think that that's one that we got to really look into and dive a little bit deeper. There's some places in town where it's going to make sense, and some other places where it doesn't.
Yeah, it, it seems like the intent would be you want the residents to be able to park in the neighborhood overnight.
Yes.
Not at two o'clock in the afternoon. So if we do the overnight one, that solves the issue with Oak Events
Right.
or any other events type thing.
And I can see that being one that you probably could apply citywide in different neighborhoods and not have it have too much of a, a negative impact.
Gary, did you have a question?
Yeah. So just to take a little different angle at this, um, developers have come into the city that we've put conditions on that basically prohibit them, or that community, to get permit parking. Meaning that a developer comes in and says, I'm building enough parking for my community. And we say, okay, great, and we've done this, or we say, great, then you don't need any permit parking. So they say, yes, we don't need any permit parking. So they've recorded that in their CCNRs that they're not, that community is not allowed to get permit parking. So my question is, is that, is there a way on this online system to actually identify certain residences that are not allowed to have permit parking?
And there is. We can, um, obviously identify different, different properties that have different rules based on the development or the CCNRs that are in place. Uh, one of, all, I, our next, I'll call it technological jump that we can take here as a city is really, we have all these little pieces of information, little data points, be it we have all these little pieces of information, little data points, be it crime reports, be it permitting, be it a CCNR issue. Really being able to build out a GIS system that maps everything in the city. So you click on a property and all of the information about that property comes up so that our code enforcement, our officers, our building inspectors, anyone who happens to be out in the field has all this information at their fingertips and it will make us a little bit more efficient out in the field. But it allows us to answer those questions very, very quickly. So that is the next, I'll call it the next iteration of us digitizing all of this work, getting online permit on the website is so that it all feeds into one system and then can split out usable information for the people that are actually out there in the field that are in charge of regulating and making sure that people are following the rules. So the short answer is yes.
I thought of another question, actually. With the new program, there's always bugs or, you know, glitches along the way that that will, that will work out. Does, does the website that you mentioned have a, any sort of feedback so that as residents, maybe they had a great experience, maybe they had a challenging experience, maybe they're older and they want to recommend, you know, coming in and, you know, help, working with someone at the, on the iPad or someone's younger and likes to do it online. Do we have any feedback that we're collecting?
I didn't see it as an option with the vendor that they had for fee, for feedback after the account creation. But we're always available if they want to call and provide feedback. And then I can even let the clerical staff know that they can provide my email for feedback as well. And then we can work with our vendor and then maybe that's an application that they add in the future. It's, it's kind of à la carte, so they'll kind of do as we need. But it's something I I can look into with them. So then maybe next year, if you guys have questions, we can provide more feedback.
Wonderful. Thanks.
I just had just a couple of things. I know, I believe a few years ago, Dr. Noda would probably know that we allowed RVs to be parked on the street for an extended period of time if the homeowner was doing construction to their house. Is that still a thing or am I imagining that it was never a thing and I just made it up in my head?
All right, I'm sorry, you said RVs?
Yeah, so like if you're doing construction in your home, you can park your RV.
But we do allow that, but you you have to get a permit and we call it an encroachment permit.
Okay, so they can do an encroachment permit, so this doesn't have anything to do with the parking permits or is this something that's?
So the parking permit is actually cheaper and more streamlined. So encroachment permit is anytime any activity is done on the street, right? So if we have a large scale project that's coming in, like, you know, tree trimming, they have to apply for encroachment permit, right? SCE work on the street or as small as I'm going to place an RV or put a dumpster out on the street. And then it takes about, about a week for us to process. So this one is more on demand and it's cheaper than a permit. So again, I think, you know, we're trying to do something that's a little bit more resident friendly for them to park a RV or park a trash bin.
Okay, terrific. And then also as we look at the different areas of the city for permits, is the traffic commission going to be the final say on who, what neighborhoods get permits and what don't?
No, again, as you're aware, mayor, the traffic commission, all commissions are recommending body. They do not set policies. Well, the planning commission has some policies set for, by the state, but they will make recommendation and will ultimately have to come to city council.
Okay.
Okay.
And then as we expand this out, is it possible to put, I know every year I have to renew my home alarm through the PD. Is there any way that we could put that online? Because mine is still sitting on my dresser with a piece of paper.
The trick is that we hope to get everything online here in the very near future.
Okay, perfect. And then you also mentioned about the expansion. Is there a way to tie the business license into those addresses so code enforcement knows if there's a home business at that address?
And that would be the next layer that we would put on top of it. Yes.
Okay, perfect. So we gave a whole bunch of direction. I don't know who was taking, Wendy, you're taking notes. Perfect. So based on the direction that we've given staff, could I get a motion and a second? Uh, to. Yeah, to go, to go do our.
Our bidding.
Yes.
Then I will make that motion.
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. All right, public hearing, adoption of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, annual operating and capital budget. City manager, you're up.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm going to actually turn it right over to our finance director because I'm sure I'm going to interrupt him once or twice. But I do want to just point out though that, again, Craig and his team have done a fantastic job in getting this all together, especially given the fact that there's a lot of unknowns out there in the world right now in terms of how exactly to do some of the budget forecasting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Craig.
Thank you, Chet. Good evening, mayor, Mayor Protam, council members, city staff and residents. Presented for your considerations tonight is the fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, annual operating and capital budget. Okay, so for the budget's development, it's quite an extensive process, approximately three months. We start in February where the mid-year was presented to the council. Meetings were then were conducted with departments and heads and city, city staff collectively. Staff then met with the budget standing committee on two separate occasions, April third and April fourteenth for input draft and department of, draft and department overviews were presented to council the first hearing on April twenty-eighth. A final review was then circled back with the budget standing committee on May fifth. We offered one-time, one-on-one meetings with council members for budget review. Questions were provided, meetings with commissions were conducted for input and then the budget was noticed and posted for public review.
Before Craig goes to the next slide, I just want to mention that the meetings with the commission was, were actually very insightful in terms of just things that they were interested in seeing in the city. So I can see that as a practice that I hope to continue into the future.
Right. So as we enter into the next budget season, we have a next high level of uncertainty as city manager, as Simmons mentioned. There's ongoing global conflicts, it's adding to the market volatility. Tariff hikes are now on a temporary ninety-day holding period to allow for negotiations with the operating company, city or countries. This resulted in erosion of consumer confidence, supply chain has interruptions and it's also created some price hikes. The Fed anticipates additional rate adjustments to control inflation through twenty-two-five. This is a snapshot of the general fund projected revenues for the two fiscal years, twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven, including transfers in for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-nine point one million, for twenty-six, twenty-seven is twenty-nine point four million. Some revenue highlights, projected revenues again are twenty-nine point one million for twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven is twenty-nine point four million. This includes all the transfers in from the other funds. This anticipates the city will continue to experience slow growth and flattening sales tax through twenty-five. Property taxes are continuing an upward trend, which is a positive note. Some other revenue highlights, UUT or utility users tax is two point nine million. So down about five percent from the prior fiscal year. Franchise fees at one point one million is approximately the same as prior adopted budget. License permits, one point four million, up from point three twenty-four, concludes a three percent COLA. And fines and forfeitures are estimated at one point six million, reflects a return to a more normalized level. This again provides offset to all the police program and services, services. Investment earnings are going to be down a little bit, projecting six hundred eighty thousand for the fiscal year. Assumes downward adjustments with smaller portfolio and changes in the market. Here's a screen of the expenditures for projection for the two fiscal years. Includes transfers in or transfers out, excuse me, for fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six. The proposed budget is twenty-eight point six million and for twenty-six, twenty-seven is twenty-eight point nine million. General fund expenditures, some detail. Again, the departments reflect further restructuring to meet city and department goals. Includes approved year two of the MOU adjustments and increased O and M for higher contract pricing. City council made some major changes to reflect items that were moved to administration to better align with operations, including supplies, postage, advertising, employee service awards, commissioner appreciation, meeting keyboard casting and dues and subscriptions. Administration includes the city manager, city clerk, community resources. Total six full-time and two part-time for salaries estimated at one point six million. Next slide. Finance estimated at one point oh zero million. Police represents the largest department at thirty-seven percent of the total budget. K nine now is being recognized as separate operating division, division number five thirty and it's at full complement following a successful placement from the academy cadet. Estimates for twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven are nine point five million and nine point eight million. Development Services, the second largest department, consists of ten divisions. Additionally, proposed positions include two maintenance positions, one is senior maintenance and others is maintenance one to further support public works, estimated at seven point four million and seven point five million for the two fiscal years. Recreation Community Services includes administration, community services, day camp, playground, sports, special classes and events. Aquatics now is year-round, added at J F T B pool facilities. Rec coordinators proposed to support sunburst fuel operations. Deputy directors proposed to support further recreation programs. Increase in part-time salaries and new and expanded, for new and expanded programs and estimate for four point three million and four point four million for the two fiscal years respectively. Summary of the proposed staffing includes four positions. As I mentioned, two, two in maintenance for public works and the two in rec, total of two hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred. Capital improvement program overview, three point eight million in multi-year capital, which is carryover projects. Ten million is proposed for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, five point four million of this will be from the general fund. The city continues to pursue grant funding to accomplish CIP for facilities, streets, bike lanes, parks and tech upgrades. Other budget considerations, funding will continue for UAL paydown. This consists of two hundred sixty thousand annual ADP or additional discretionary payments plus fifty thousand dollars monthly installments to the, the trust that's been established or six hundred thousand dollars annually. One point three million has been applied to the UAL paydown as of March thirty-one. Future changes by Calpurs are under, underway and are anticipated to increase the city's cost. Takeaways for this budget is that it represents the city's fifth constraint, structurally balanced budget. If adopted, it also will be the fifth straight budget to include a surplus. Again, the projection for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven reflects surpluses of five hundred two thousand and four hundred sixteen thousand. That concludes my presentation.
With that, Madam Mayor, I would just say that I want to thank the department heads who obviously did a lot of work to make sure that their numbers matched and trying to make sure that we're getting, you know, what I'll call value for every dollar that we're spending out there in the world. I do think that we have an aggressive plan going forward, not just our CIP list, but the different programs that we're looking to add. But I do think that they are all achievable under the budget that's been outlined and presented to you, to you all.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Okay, so the staff. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I've heard rumors that we just rubber stamp, excuse me, rubber stamped the budget. I just want to make clear that there's a tremendous amount of work that goes in from council with the department heads and with their city manager. We have budget standing committee meetings, which are public meetings that we go over that. We've met a number of times. And then also, I'm assuming that all of our, all of my colleagues did their one-on-one meetings. That answered a number of questions. We have taken those questions and answers and they are published online so the public can see that we spent a tremendous amount of time on looking at the budget, understanding the budget, making sure that we can defend the budget in layman's terms. So with that, because council's already done their meetings, are there any follow-up questions from council? Okay, open the public hearing for public comments. Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing for public comments and can I request a motion and a second?
Gladly, move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Public hearing, the consideration of a franchise to Golden Water State, Golden State Water. Thank you. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a renewal of a contract or franchise agreement that we have with Golden Water, Golden State Water. And I can have Mr. Noda go through it in more detail, but the gist of it is that Golden State runs pipes underneath our city infrastructure, being our streets. As such, we can charge a franchise fee. This isn't about the operation so much of the, of the water pipes, but rather our ability to actually collect a fee for operating those, those systems within our, under our property. Staff's done a good job in checking around with neighboring entities about what exactly their franchise rates look like and these are on par with those that you would find in Orange County and California.
All right, do any of my colleagues have any questions?
I have, I have a clarifying question. In the budget, it states that the franchise fee is six percent, but in the staff report, it shows two percent or one percent. Can you clarify?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
In the budget, with the other franchises, electricity, gas, it shows six percent franchise fee?
I believe it's a accumulation. We have several franchise fees, including SCE and SoCal Gas. So I believe off the top of my head, SoCal Gas here is two percent, SCE is two percent and the other one, SoCal Gas is two percent. So I believe it's an accumulation of the, the three entities.
I think it's an aggregate also of what that actually presents within the total budget.
I think of, you know, like on my water bill, it says six percent. Is there a breakdown, local state or?
There could be, but we don't, we're, the city doesn't charge those fees. So we'd have to go and see what Golden Water, Golden State Water is actually charging.
Okay, so we're at one percent or two percent?
It's one percent for, it says, how do you call it, the gross revenue generated and the two percent is gross annual receipts.
And is that the same as what rate payers are paying now?
If you, if you live in Los Alamitos.
I do.
Yeah, yeah, so yes.
Okay, so there's, it's not an increase.
Oh, yeah, correct, correct.
If I could just clarify those two percent and one percent figures you're seeing in the staff report and the ordinance that's before you, that's actually established by statute. So that's why we're consistent with what you would see across the counties because you have the statute actually providing those rates in terms of what you can ask for in exchange for this franchise rights.
I want to clarify, as Finance Director Kohler stated, I believe Councilmember Hibber, your reference to the six percent, that's the UUT tax in the city of Los Alamitos. The user utility tax. That's the six percent.
Not, not a big deal. I just, I thought I recall seeing six percent, but thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing for public comments. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing for public comments. And because I finally know what I'm doing, I'm going to have our city attorney read the title of the ordinance.
Thank you, mayor. Before the council for introduction this evening is an ordinance entitled, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash zero five. In ordinance of the city council, the city of Los Alamitos, California, granting to Golden State Water Company, the California Corporation, a franchise for the right to use or to. the right to use or to lay and use pipes, conduits and appurtenances, excuse me, for transmitting and distributing water in, along, across, upon and under the public streets, ways, alleys and places within Los Alamos.
All right, can I get a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Onto council announcements, starting with Councilmember Hibbard.
Thank you. If you would be so kind, it's just going to be just one second, I get my notes. All right, I met with LA County Sheriff Luna and our Sheriff Barnes and discussed the public safety needs for the upcoming 2026 World Cup, 2027 Super Bowl and the 2028 Olympics. They're saying that all three of these massive events are taking place here in Southern California and require sophisticated local, state and federal partnerships that they're already working on. Sheriff Barnes was recently asked to testify before the US House Homeland Security Committee in his capacity as major county sheriffs of America's VP for Homeland Security. So if you're interested in those types of committee meetings, you may enjoy seeing him in DC. I believe he just concluded testifying before two senate committees in DC as well. I attended the Regional Military Affairs Committee on the base and the Red Cross highlighted the work they did to assist victims of the Palisades fire. I also attended the dedication of the Outdoor Learning Center at Sunburst Youth Academy on the base. And like the mayor said, the learning center was dedicated to former Congresswoman Grace Napolitano. I met with a member of RFK Junior's Health and Human Services team and discussed the progress they've made to get food dyes and other toxins out of the food, out of our food. And if you're interested in learning more about what the Department of Health and Human Services is doing, I recommend following HHSGOV on X. And then this past weekend, was it yesterday? I had the honor of being part of an Honor Flight returning from Washington DC where I believe it was 37 WWII, Korean War and Vietnam War veterans were coming back here to LAX. And for those of you that may not be familiar, Honor Flight is an organization that flies veterans to Washington DC to visit the memorials dedicated to their service and then back to their hometowns where friends, families, American legions, veterans organizations and other patriots welcome them home. There's about, I don't know, a few hundred people that were there, walking home. It was pretty emotional. It was emotional for me, particularly seeing so many of the veterans coming with, you know, tears in their eyes, especially the Vietnam vets, but also the WWII vets because they're about 102, 103 years old. Yeah, it's cool to see that. And then I believe the next Honor Flight is in September. And if this is something that anyone, you know, watching this or in the room is interested in, their website is honorflight.org. And you could sign up to get more details on when that's happening. And I will end with saying that Captain South was there with, no worries, with Veronica and some other members of Westcom. And it was, I want to say it was great bumping into you there. We were both off the clock and...
Just showing him.
Okay. Yeah, I know, we were both, you know, off the clock and running into you and Veronica and Mickey and, and there was actually some folks from the American Legion here in Los Al there as well. We just all happened to be there. So I wanted to say that you give me hope and I'm glad that, I was really glad to see you there, so thanks.
All right, Councilmember Nofolda. Councilmember Lowe.
Well, I can remember what I did yesterday, so. Yesterday, I hung out with Tryta, our assemblyman. Tree, I always say it wrong, Treeta. Gotcha. Perfect. And we were at the Old World in Huntington Beach and we were at the Dotson Races, so the winner dog races at Old World. And so actually, there's a lot of people there and a lot of people pay to be there. And I was thinking about, you know, Pine Avenue or Pine Street, excuse me, you know, our town center at some point. It's like, that'd be an interesting little event there for the town center. I know they do it at the racetrack as well, but I don't know, it was a kind of a cool thing, so those are things to think about. I know we have Paws in the Park, which is probably not, not for this type of thing. But anyways, we should think about something to do in the city at some point. That's it.
Mayor Protam Doby.
All right, Panther Crowd. So I also attended, so here's the thing, like, we all attend some of the same events, but we all have a different perspective on the events that we attended. So I attended also the dedication of the outdoor learning space and it was dedicated to former Congresswoman Grace Napolitano. Now, the reason this is significant is because that beautiful, vivacious young woman is in her 80s and she's still traveling and she is just now getting her flowers. And to be able to speak personally to someone who tirelessly and fearlessly advocated for a program that's right in our backyard, you don't get that honor every day. I was able to present something to her and look her in her eyes and say thank you. And it's very rare that people who do tremendous work get their flowers while they can still smell them. And I was able to give her her flowers and she was able to enjoy them. So that made my heart all types of happy. I'm a huge Sunburst Youth Academy fan, so to hear her giving direction to the other electeds that were present, because they thought they were just there for a photo op, but she was like, no, take this baton, take this torch, take this number, continue my legacy. It was awesome. And then I also attended the Casa's Bootstrap Ball and met their new executive director. This is kind of significant because she came up through the program. It's always nice when you get someone that is running the, running the whole show that came up through it because their perspective is always so brilliantly different. The things that they pour their energy to are just, there's a different level of passion there. And if you look around the room and you see these adorable boots, those are the centerpieces. So I'm so excited that we managed to abscond with three. They were free, we didn't take them. They were gifts. We freed them from their table spaces. And then I also attended the advisory committee awards recognition for our rock star, Emmeline Noda. And we didn't just have, it was so funny because I don't even think the school people knew why we were all there. But we start standing on chairs and hooting and hollering and taking out the thunderclap machines and everything. But that is the appreciation that we like to show our staff because we got some absolutely spectacular staff. I say that all the time, but I mean it. And I went to my Mosquito and Vectors meeting and I'd just like to iterate again that all of the updates, all of the info, all of the reports that come out, they get loaded to our website. So if you have got mosquito questions, vector questions, rat, mouse, what is it, ticks, fleas, check our website, all the information is there. And then I would just, as a, as a separate side note, I attended several budget standing committee meetings for our budget. First of all, I appreciate the level of care and expertise that went into perfecting this budget. I am eternally grateful for the fact that we are at a surplus and we do have that AAA rating. But just for perspective, I also went to one OC SAN budget meeting. I went to one Mosquito and Vectors meeting for the budget and one budget meeting for OCOG. I went to about 59, I'm exaggerating, for our own budget. But most agencies, most groups, you get one shot and you got to ask all your questions right then. So I do not want it to be taken for granted, the level of care that our staff and our city afford us to make sure that although it's not the most large or spectacular looking budget as far as the money is concerned, the level of care that puts into it is like a billion dollar budget. So I'm very grateful. Thank you. That's all I got.
All right. And just to add on about Congressman Napolitano, I've always been a big fan. She's gone to every single Sunburst Youth Academy graduation, I believe, except for one due to health issues. This is a lady that she knows where these kids have come from because she was one of them. She is a longstanding Congresswoman. She's 89 years old, just retired in 2024 and she has a high school diploma. So she speaks that language to those kids, those kids adore her and she gives it right back to them. So anyway, so with that, we will adjourn at...